Evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Board of the Town of Austin Work Session for Tuesday, April 6th, 2021. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Neil Wolf of Bob's Army Navy in Austin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. So yesterday, we learned that Mr. Neil Wolf, the owner of Bob's Army Navy in Austin, passed away. Neil, as everybody knows, was a pillar of the Austin community, both as a small business owner and friend to many local organizations and businesses. Neil was an active member of the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. He had served on the Board of the Austin Children's Center some years ago and was always ready to pitch in and help the community in a volunteer capacity in any way he could. The Town of Austin was one of his loyal customers, just one of many local organizations that relied on Bob's Army Navy for purchasing uniforms and work clothes for our staff. Neil will certainly be missed by so many in Austin and beyond. Our hearts go out to his family. In memory, be a blessing. Today is a big day in New York State as all New Yorkers over the age of 16 are now eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. The WCC campus in Valhalla is scheduling appointments through the Westchester County Department of Health website as opposed to the state site, and that is at health.westchester.gov/2019-novel-coronavirus. And then you navigate to the Vaccine Information Section for links to appointments for specific dates. Do not be discouraged if there are no appointments when you first log in. These dates are updated regularly with new appointments. Appointments at Open Door, the Prescription Center of Austin, Health Smart, Hudson Pharmacy, and other local sites can be made directly through these local businesses. You can also schedule appointments through the New York State Coronavirus webpage or state-run sites like the Westchester County Center or the Armory in Yonkers. Westchester County publishes a list of local allocations each week, although sometimes they're a little late, which the town shares on our Facebook page. The Austin Briar Cliff COVID Angels is a group of volunteers originally organized to help seniors in our community get vaccination appointments. Now they're helping get as many shots into our community's arms as possible, one or two per person max, of course. Anyone struggling to navigate the myriad possibilities for vaccination appointments can reach out to them for help, and especially those who are challenged by access to computers, internet, or are Spanish-speaking. They can help get appointments for those struggling to get the vaccine. They're also still taking names of homebound for us to submit to the county when the county is ready to roll out round two of the homebound vaccinations. You can contact the group at otownvaccineangels@gmail.com or call 914-236-4567. This group has been very inspiring, and I truly appreciate their sense of community and their willingness to do their best to secure local appointments and sometimes specific brands of vaccine appointments for as many as possible. Thanks to our O-Town Angels, we are getting Austin vaccinated. The 2021 Town and County Tax Bills are arriving in mailboxes now. And no, your eyes aren't deceiving you. You are seeing tax rate decreases across almost all taxing jurisdictions, including most lines in the town and county budgets. If you have not received your tax bill by the end of this week, contact the Tax Receiver's Office at 914-762-8790 or hperlowitz@townofostine.com for more information. The due date for payment is April 30th. The easiest and most secure way to pay is online via Express Pay available through the town's website. You can also pay via mail or by placing your stamped envelope in the dedicated Dropbox at the Austin Post Office Lobby, which gets delivered straight to our offices and doesn't get processed through a plane before delivery. Or you can still stop by in person at Town Hall, 16 Croton Avenue, where the Tax Office is set up to take payments in the lobby between 9:00 a.m. and 2:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. We strongly encourage taxpayers to consider paying online as it is an easy and economical way to be sure your payment reaches the Tax Office on time. Please do not wait till the last minute. If you need help navigating the online payment feature or help with just about anything else with your town-county taxes, just give the Tax Office a call at 914-762-8790. Receiver Holly Perlowitz and her team Patty and Angela are always ready to help. Austin is hiring. The town is looking for a seasonal Parks Groundskeeper. The complete job description and information about how to apply is posted on the town website. We've also shared information on our social media pages. Positions are also available for summer recreation positions, including lifeguards and camp counselors. You can apply for these jobs through the Village of Austin Recreation Department page. Earth Week is just around the corner. This year, Green Austin's Earth Day Festival has been upgraded to Earth Week for a week-long event on celebration of activities, partnerships, and offers from local businesses from Saturday, April 17th through Sunday, April 25th. Visit greenostine.org/earthdayfestival, that's earth-day-festival, to plan your Earth Week agenda. Be sure to mark your calendars for a couple of luncheon learns, actually a few. On Monday, April 19th, at 12:00 noon via Zoom, the Town and Village of Austin are hosting one to focus on the results of Austin's Cornell University Climate Adaptive Design Studio. In the fall of 2019, third-year landscape architecture graduate students focused their studies on Austin and developed visionary designs for a more climate-change-and-sea-level-rise-resilient Austin waterfront. In the Luncheon Learn, Cornell Professor Josh Serra will lead participants through an overview of the Austin studio and how the Austin community can take this visioning exercise to the next step. Zoom access details are available on the Green Austin website. We will share out this information on Facebook and the town's website over the next few weeks. We will also be displaying poster boards summarizing the Austin studio during Earth Week at the Austin train station during their open hours from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So get up early and get down to the train station to see them. Stay tuned for more details. We will also participate in a second Luncheon Learn on Tuesday, April 20th, and hopefully, we will have an exciting challenge to kick off our Grid Rewards program in the town of, in the Austinians and in Briar Cliff. This is a program done in partnership with Sustainable Westchester and ConEd, which includes an app that you download that helps you monitor and adjust your energy use so you can reduce the load on the grid and also overall save energy, and you can get cash back. That's the really exciting part. Finally, Wednesday, April 21st, we will have another opportunity to learn during lunch about energy smart homes and how you can save money and energy with more efficient heating and cooling systems. There are also so many other great programs that are part of Earth Day. One of my favorites will be Alicia Simpson hosting a Mind Body Spirit Austin Pre-Yoga Class at the Waterfront, weather permitting, on Sunday, April 18th at 9:00 a.m. And the day before that, on April 17th, our Habitat stewards are going to continue their work to clear invasives and plant natives in their place at Ryder Park. That's at 10:00 a.m. Remember to check out Green Austin's website to find out all about the Earth Week programming. There's so much to learn and participate in, and not a minute to waste. Finally, as a reminder, the Town of Austin's Public Workshop on Sustainable Austin, our new comprehensive plan, is scheduled for this Thursday evening, April 8th at 7:30 p.m. Please mark your calendars and help shape the future of land use in Austin. This workshop will give residents and local businesses the space to share ideas and provide feedback on our current draft goals. Get involved with this plan by joining us on Zoom. The meeting information is available on our website and Facebook page. We will also be providing a non-virtual option to participate with a to-go workshop and survey available on the project website and a few locations around town following the April 8th workshop. Since we have our Town Planner Valerie Manostra on with us tonight, Valerie, do you want to give us a very brief update on the comprehensive plan process thus far and what the public can expect on Thursday and beyond?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the comprehensive plan is, we're actually having a meeting this Thursday, April 7th at 7:30 p.m.
April 8th?
April 8th. April 8th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
April 8th at 7:30 p.m. via Zoom. The Comprehensive Plan Committee has developed draft goals at this point in time and the comprehensive plan process. So the meeting itself is going to focus on getting community feedback on those draft goals as well as getting community feedback on development and land use and open spaces connectivity. In addition, if, if people are not able to attend the, the live workshop on Thursday, we are preparing to have a survey that people can pick up at numerous places around the town as well as download online and answer and fill it out. And it'll be walking everybody through similar exercises that we'll be doing with the public on Thursday. So there are numerous opportunities to participate, and we look forward to seeing everyone on Thursday and also getting feedback overall from the town.
And we had a robust meeting last time with, I think, we had like 90 or about 90?
Yeah, we had about 90 people.
Zoom, and all of that information has now sort of trickled down into what has become the draft set of goals for the community.
That's correct. That's correct.
That will be the next up is the opportunity for the public to say, hey, yeah, you got it, or no, you didn't really get it, and this is what we think needs tweaking. And there's, I think, some good activities that are planned for, for getting information out of the public and getting feedback on those goals.
Right. And then in an upcoming work session at the Village Board, I mean, at the Town Board, there will be a presentation by our consultants to present where we are and provide the Town Board more details on the comprehensive plan process. And then the next phase, after getting feedback from the draft goals, will be focusing on recommendations and strategies and how to implement those overall goals within the town.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about the compliner, any of my announcements? Or do any other board members want to share any additional announcements?
I have one. The IFCA Thrift Shop will be reopening tomorrow, 10:30 to 4:30. And the regular hours will be Tuesday through Friday, 10:30 to 4:30.
Awesome. Can you guys say something?
Yeah, Austin Stash the Trash. I think they're doing it on October 18th as a town-wide.
October? Let's not talk about it.
Sorry, April.
Okay.
April 18th.
Is that going to be part of, part of one of the Earth Day? Is that going to be sort of?
Yeah, it's a town-wide. So anybody that wants to sign up, there's a Facebook page, Austin Stash the Trash. I think they're looking for one more team captain, adult, and anybody else that wants to join. And they're going to try to cover the entire town.
Fantastic.
I think over 100 people involved already.
Okay, that's the 18th. Good to know. Thank you for that. All right, and is that it from the Town Board? Okay, so with that, we are going to go into our work, work session agenda. First up, we're going to be talking about beekeeping permit fees. A few months ago, Town Board adopted a local law to regulate beekeeping in the Town of Austin. Now that the law is on the books and we're ready to start accepting applications for permits, we need to set a fee for the permit and future renewals. Valerie Manostra, our planner from Nelson Portes, did some research on our communities and has a recommendation for us tonight. Valerie, can you share what you learned and what you were recommending to the Town Board to consider for adopting for a fee or fees?
Sure. Thank you. So we're working with the Town Clerk Suzanne Donnelly to develop a permit. And one of the suggestions for this permitting process is we're going to develop an original initial application process, but then we're also going to develop a renewal process. And in looking at other communities and how they dealt with this, a number of them actually have the initial application process and permit, and then actually have just a renewal permit, which is a very simple, you know, just basically confirming that everything still remains the same. As a result of that, the renewal process itself, we don't anticipate being very onerous. And so I would like to suggest to the Town Board that an applicant only pays $100 a registration fee for the first time that they're registering their hives. And then afterwards, if any renewal, yearly renewals will just be basically paperwork processing within the, the Town Clerk, just to confirm that the information hasn't changed. And even if it did slightly, you know, you're not really looking at overall changes to the, most likely to the locations of the beehives as well as the beehives themselves. And so any minor adjustments can just be dealt with in paperwork form. But basically, the real crux of the issue will be the first initial application fee.
That sounds okay to me.
What is the village's charge?
Right now, I did not see anything on the village's fee schedule for permitting, although when I spoke to Sue Donnelly, she mentioned that she hasn't yet had to give out a permit under the village's B law. So I think to some extent, it's possible that they haven't dealt with that issue yet. And so therefore, they don't have a fee established, but it's not, it's not in their fee code and it's not on their permit application.
What's the average of other towns?
So the Town of Greenberg does $100. Then the Village of Moss Bell, they do it based upon the number of hives. And I think at this point, in terms of, we already know that the couple of properties that are looking to do the permitting do have a number of hives. I think my suggestion was just to do a straight $100 registration fee.
Does anybody have any other additional questions or thoughts on the matter? Do you think that's too high? Or do you think that's, sounds good? I mean, it sounds like it's a one-and-done kind of a thing, so.
I mean, it is. I mean, we can reduce it if you prefer. You know, the slide, the sliding scale one that I saw was somewhere between an initial fee of $20, but then they had renewal fees of, you know, $30 or $20 up to 10 hives, $30 from 11 to 25 hives. And then it would, it would, you know, just continue to scale up from there. But in terms of what I was suggesting for the town, especially in lieu of the request from Sue Donnelly that we really make the renewal process very streamlined, that it really makes sense to just have the initial application fee be the fee that gets paid, and then the, the renewals just, you know, it's just basically paperwork at this point.
Do you prefer $50? I mean, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Be 50 instead of 100, is that?
100 sounds a little high, but I'm thinking with the whole, I, I like the flat fee. I like the standard flat fee, and I like that there's not going to be a fee for renewal. So I'm kind of struggling. Is 100 really high if you don't have to pay, you only pay it once? I don't know, but just hearing it.
I'm not sure how much it costs to buy the hives. Does it?
I, I think it's a pretty big investment the first year.
Then we should charge the second year.
If they live.
Exactly. You can, we'll, we'll charge them $25 application fee for the first year, and then second year, you can pay us the rest, 75.
And maybe we should go in the middle and go 75 and start there.
Okay.
No?
I'm fine with that.
Fine. Mr. Wiltshire, are you good?
Yes, yes.
All right, we have consensus. Okay, so we will add that to the fee schedule. We don't have to do anything. We'll just add it to.
A resolution next week.
A resolution.
Yeah.
And then once, once you pass that resolution, then we'll finalize the bee permit with the, with Sue Donnelly and get that up and running so that we can have the few beekeeping, few owners that have the beekeeper, excuse me, the hives on their site actually register the hives officially with the town.
Sounds okay to me. Okay. Next up, New York Stretch Code. At our last work session, we heard from some folks from NYSERDA about the New York Stretch Energy Code and how adopting this code could help the town reach its ultimate goal of carbon neutrality by 2030, 2040, while simultaneously facilitating the town earning grant funding from NYSERDA. Now that we have learned a little bit more about this code and how it could impact the Town of Austin, we would like to discuss it further to consider pursuing adoption. Valerie, can you help kick off our discussion?
Sure. So I sent the, I think Victoria sent the board a number of items as part of your packets this week. One was a frequently asked questions. One was an actual comparison table specifically looking at what's allowed in the current building or what's the current building code requirements versus what the New York Stretch Code would require. And then the, you know, you actually received a copy of the Stretch Code. As you noticed, the New York Stretch Code is very technical in nature. And, you know, and I've spoken to the Building Inspector, John Hamilton. He has also, he endorses the adoption of the New York Stretch Code, especially because of the fact that it seems like, as, you know, as NYSERDA also mentioned, and he has been learning in his classes, that they're looking to anticipate actually adopting these provisions in the next round of updates in the New York State Building Codes to begin with. But in terms of what's really required from the Town Board, there is a resolution that you can pass that, by passing that resolution, it will in effect create or adopt the New York Stretch Code. And then that code will then become what John Hamilton will be using as part of his building permit reviews and building code reviews for individual projects. It will basically effectively, it will affect all development projects within the town. And then, as you can see, there's numerous, you know, provisions within that New York Stretch Code that will be incorporated into the overall New York State Building Code. And it basically just increases the overall energy efficiency and requirements for development within the Town of Austin.
How would it affect people already in the planning process?
It will. Right. So we'll have to double-check on that, but I believe as long as they haven't pulled the, pulled the building permit, they would be obligated to adhere to the new code.
It might even be beyond that, to be vested in prior codes. You have to have substantial construction and substantial, substantial expense. So I don't, I, I understand the intent of this is to adopt it as-is so that the town can submit for the points to get for grant eligibility. But perhaps there could be a provision to opt out for projects that have already obtained a building permit or already in the planning board review process, if that's something the board wants to consider.
I'd be okay with that. I mean, I think that it's certainly far enough along that it would, you know, have to send somebody back to the drawing board at this point. Might not be the best, although ultimately, it's going to benefit the builder because they're going to end up, you know, having more efficient building envelope, and that'll save money for everybody in the long run and also save energy. So, I mean, you know, it depends, I guess, we, maybe that's just, we could clarify a little bit, you know, what projects are where and which ones it would affect with John. And then we can make a decision from there if there's a way to fairly base it in, adopt it, and then figure out, you know, this is going to apply from point A to going forward.
John may also be able to provide some insight, you know, when, when you're going through the planning board process. I don't know if you're really doing the technical drawings, Valerie, you might be able to comment on this, that you would need for this level of construction, because this is more building rather than site plan type issues. So it may affect a project in the context of the, the construction costs. But it's not like they would probably have to redo or, or amend what's already been done. It's, it would just be, I guess, the cost to complete based upon what they contemplated when they started the process.
Yeah, that's correct. And I actually, there is, there's two documents, and I looked at them both on NYSERDA, and some of the information is in the frequently asked questions that I sent you. And there are two different documents on NYSERDA's website. One looked at commercial properties and one looked at residential properties. And they went through the, basically, the payback period in which the property owner would then see an overall benefit to the, the increase in energy efficiency. And all of the payback periods in general will definitely, the benefits will find themselves way before the lifetime of that particular energy efficiency that they're including into the overall development would, you know, would end. And so, and in general, I believe in the frequently asked questions list, I think it was somewhere on average, it was like 2.5 or somewhere less, about three years payback period for residential or construction. I can look at it right now. I'm sorry, it's not three years. It's a 6.4 is the weighted at New York average for simple payback.
It's pretty fast, though, for energy.
It is, right. There definitely will have, the payback period is much lower than the life, you know, span of the, the energy efficiency that you're putting into the house or property.
Remind me which zone we're in?
This is townwide.
This would be townwide.
No, 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 which zone in the codes? They had the H code was, I'll ask John.
Oh, yes.
I actually think they said that in the webinar, and I don't remember.
I, I couldn't remember if it was three or six, so.
I don't, I don't remember.
I was just looking at the specific differences, the specific, specific codes, and it varied by zone, so.
I, yeah, I, I know that I saw that, and it seemed like we were in the zone that was going to benefit sooner rather than later when I, when I was on the webinar originally. I just don't remember which number it was.
Okay, I don't know.
So what's, what's your pleasure board in terms of phasing in?
I like it. I want to hear where our projects are. SPCA is pretty far along, the Learning Center, I mean.
Yeah, my recommendation would be, yeah, my recommendation would be, we would look at projects that have not pulled a building permit, right? Those that have pulled the building permit, have already have pulled in permit, have already gone through the, you know, building code review. So that, that would be my recommendation, and we can, you know, follow up with John. And then clearly, Kristy will have to take a look to make sure that that's, you know, possible. But that would be my recommendation.
I mean, another thing to keep in mind, and Dana, this is something you and I discussed earlier, the procedure, NYSERDA does contemplate doing this by local law. I looked at their, their template resolution, and it is local law. And so we're looking at at least a month. If, if you want to call for a public hearing next week, if the board's ready for that, and then hold a public hearing at the end of the month, and then potentially close it and adopt it at that meeting or in April, or, you know, if and when the board feels comfortable getting to that point. So what's happening now may not be reflective of what the situation is, so we may need to look a little bit further advanced, like, like Valerie's suggesting with the building permit.
And well, then we should, if we're planning to adopt it, though, I feel like we should give warning. And then anything moving forward from, I don't know, when we call for the public hearing is on notice.
And that would be courtesy on the part of the town, because they would, they would still be bound by it, but it would certainly be a benefit to the property owner if they were aware of this and or took the expense, certainly.
Right. Okay, does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Okay, great.
So do, does the board want to have a resolution on its agenda for next week, calling for a public hearing?
Yes. Okay. Boat ramp, local law. So last month, we started discussing two potential local laws to consider adopting this spring, starting with a local law to require a permit for boat launch use and parking at Lewis Angle Park in those very specific elongated spots that are supposed to be for our boat launch customers. Since our last discussion, our Town Council has worked with more, I'm sorry, not more efficient heating and cooling system, with Councilmember Feldman, our resident boat expert, to draft a proposed local law, which was distributed to the board last week. Councilor Donna, can you please walk us through the draft? And then we will talk about some additional information that we received today and how it might inform us moving forward with this draft.
So I had some discussions with Councilwoman Feldman, and she provided some very useful information. So the way we're structuring this and based the discussion that the board had at the work session last month is that this is a boat ramp permit. So it's, the intent is that you get the permit in order to be able to launch your boat into the water from Lewis Angle Park. And then there's also three oversized parking spaces that are adjacent to that area. that are adjacent to that area for the purpose of parking vehicles that have a trailer attached to them. For and the trailer being used to get the watercraft into the water. So the way it's currently structured is that the restrictions are based upon whether the vessel needs a trailer to get into the water. And that's my understanding of how it's kind of been happening in the past. And it restricts kind of the smaller vessels like canoes and kayaks and stuff like that, that that could kind of be on top of a vehicle. Anyone, please feel free to chime in, because this is not my area.
It excludes, and people, we traditionally don't charge for somebody to launch a kayak or a little windsurfer.
Right, and then um it it also does, the law does reference the fact that during the warmer months or during certain months, the town does put a ramp in the water. But that's not really exclusive or relevant to when the boat launch is available to the public, so it's just kind of acknowledging that it exists. And then we threw in a disclaimer of liability, so that it's understood that people use the boat launch at their own risk and it's expected that people who are using the boat launch uh have the knowledge and expertise to safely do so. And then with respect to the actual permit itself, um it provides that any, as I said earlier, any person who is going to be using the boat launch for a watercraft that will require a trailer would have to get a permit from the clerk's office, which is on an annual basis. And as the supervisor mentioned, we did learn earlier today that there may be a daily permit option available, but I'm just gonna go through it as currently drafted and then we can incorporate that concept into the discussion. And the fee will be as set by the town board by resolution from time to time with the fee for town of Austin residents, including incorporated Austin and Brickwith Manor, having a lower rate than non Austin residents, and that's consistent with what we've done with um dog park permits um and licenses that we adopted a couple of years ago. Excuse me, that the board adopted a couple of years ago. And as part of the permit application, the applicant would have to provide their registration information and license plate number for the trailer which is required to be licensed with the state. And so this would encourage people to make sure that they're properly registering their trailer. And then based upon that information, as well as any other information the town board may determine is appropriate to put in the application. The clerk will, so this is going to be a largely ministerial permit, meaning that if they provide all the information that's required of them um and prove that they're sufficiently licensed, then they get the permit um without any additional discretion on the part of the town clerk. And with that, the town clerk will issue a decal or a sticker for each year, so that'll be color coded. And it'll be easy to identify the person um that they have the proper permit from the town because they have that. So the permit itself is actually for the ability to launch your boat. And then with that, also comes the ability to park your trail, your vehicle with the trailer in those oversized parking spaces. And so the way it's currently structured in terms of violation, the concern that I kind of saw was well, you can have someone who has their annual license, excuse me, permit from the town clerk, but if they don't have that decal or that sticker or whatever they're provided on their trailer so that they could be identified, then that would also be a violation as well, so that there isn't this question if the police are are out there inspecting and enforcing that someone may have the annual permit and just not have it um displayed in their vehicle. So if you have the license, if you have the permit, you also have to have it displayed so that it's easily identifiable. And then it's a violation if you use the boat launch without the permit, if you use the boat launch without your decal, if you park in those spaces without the permit or if you park in those spaces without having your decal posted. And the violation is not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars or imprisonment of not more than fifteen days. And that I took straight out of the existing violation language from the park section of the code.
Great. That's great. Sounds good to me. Um I uh had a question, oh no, I was just going in um maybe read to you from the what the clerk shared with us today. Does that make sense? Um so this has to do with the Daily Pass um and Passport, which is the company that the software uh company that we use for um permitting uh parking in in the village. And uh we, so we, so uh the clerk's office spoke with um somebody at Passport and their solution for sales for the boat ramp was for daily as well as yearly pass holders. So let me read through this before. I know what we were, where we left off was we weren't even gonna deal with daily. But just hear out the suggestion, okay? Um Daily Passholders can be, can can be, daily passes can be bought at any time and are good for twenty-four hours. A QR code will be created, allowing boaters to go directly to the page to apply for the pass. Passport would do an auto approval of the credit card and the pass below will be emailed to the end user. Daily Pass users would be encouraged to order the permit before they leave home to go boating, so the permit can be printed and placed on the dashboard of the car. But I'm gonna get into why that is may not, maybe not important. Boaters could purchase daily permits and show the pass on their phones if necessary. Um yearly pass holders, a QR code will be created, allowing boaters to go directly to the page to apply for their pass. Complete the application upon approval by the clerk's office, the permit will take effect. For twenty twenty-one, a boat ramp permit will be issued to be put on their trailer. The handheld terminals will be up uploaded, so that parking enforcement and police will be able to check for valid permits. All permits will expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, and Passport can have the application ready for April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So here's a suggestion. Um what if we only allow the parking to be used by annual um pass holders? And daily pass holders, you're on your own for parking, but you still are required for boat launch to have, to get a daily pass, because then we get out of the um problem of enforcement for the daily passes, because those are the ones that tend to be bought at the last minute, whereas the annual passes are usually bought in advance. Any thoughts, Councilwoman Feldman?
Say that again? You wanna tell people who the daily launchers that they can't use the trailer spots?
True, yes.
Are they registering with Passport with the license plate number?
So that's the, the challenge is that we can't, we can't seem to overcome the administrative hurdle of having the license plate scanner or the information available to the police right away for the parking. Um conceivably, now what we know, which is better than we had two weeks ago, is that people can purchase the daily passes immediately. They get proof of payment, they perhaps if they pay, they do this before they leave their house and they print something out, they will have something to show, which the enforcement of the boat launch could continue to be done as it has been done for many years with sort of informally with the people from Boat and Canoe Club, again, sort of like community policing, like we sort of have going on with the dog parks. So it would take out of the picture the more concrete enforcement of the parking issue with the police and um lean more on sort of what's been done in the past, it's a little bit more flexible for people who might be coming on a whim or um need to either pay on the spot or before they leave their house.
Right, so anybody can, you know, so again, this is back to, we're permitting the use of the boat launch for boat for, right? That's, that's really what we're, the main state here is we're, we want, there's only three parking spots, right? So that's three boats, whereas lots of other people are using the the boat launch. I feel like we keep losing people. We just lost.
Yes, I think we just lost. That's not so helpful, okay.
Hello, how is everybody?
To go buy a boat together, I think is what we need to do.
Anyway, so yes, the idea is that to get out of the um issue of giving the, if the problem is people are parking and taking up spaces and they don't have a boat, a permit to launch a boat, we say, okay, well, anybody who has an annual um pass can park there. The daily people are allowed to launch their boats from the launch, but they're not putting their, leaving their car in that, one of those spaces. That's all. I don't know, it seems like, and then we get out of the issue of the enforcement.
I mean, it makes sense. The annual pass holders holders have the premium spots.
Correct.
And it provides that encouragement that we were trying to get with the fees um to get people to get the annual permits in the first place, which would then be easier to monitor.
Exactly. All right, so do we have consensus?
Yep.
Okey dokey, then let's move right along. Sounds good to me. We can loop back to this, I guess.
I was gonna say, we may have to circle back to her.
Do we wanna move on? What what happened? Let me see, I don't know, everything on my phone. Lost in the ether, okay. Um hmm, let me see, I'm going to give a little text to our friend, since we can't hunt her down. She's reappeared. You there?
Internet crash.
Hello.
All right, well, everybody on the board seems to like this, which is incentive for people to get the annual um passes and still a way to collect fees from people uh who are just daily pass holders, but they don't have the uh premium spots, so.
Um I do agree to it with weekends, but weekdays, there's really no, but you can't put it in the train station lot in the weekdays, really. But there's very few people who come down, but sometimes it's a fisherman for a day, just saying.
And they get the annual pass, they get the annual pass in advance, fisherman for the day.
Because the reality is there's only three spots, right? So what would someone do on a weekday if those spots are already full?
Well, that's the thing, it's, they're rarely full on a weekday. It's the weekends where the, where the bulk of the people come and at that point, the MTA lot doesn't mind if you park there. And during the, and the weekdays, they do care if you park there.
And on the week, on during the weekdays, people could come to the clerk's office, purchase an annual permit either in person, get it right away, because there's staff in the office. The, the, that's one of the issues with the annual permit. So for the weekday issue, there is staff available who would be able to discuss them and be able to purchase it.
Could they give her the daily permit as well?
Daily permit, they wouldn't need to.
Well, I'm just saying, if somebody came from Connecticut for the day to go trapper fishing and it was a Wednesday. And they only wanted to come for one day, they could go up to the clerk's office and get.
They could, they just can't park in a spot. It's, that's, remember we were talking about incentive to just get the annual, because it's, it's worth it one, if you just even launch twice? Okay, so. Here, we're, what we're just doing right now is actually giving people an option to get the daily. Where we didn't have that before, because we were just gonna offer an annual pass. Now we're saying, well, we could still go give a daily pass, but if you wanna park in the spots, you have to have an annual pass.
Okay. And we could also see perhaps if Passport can add that information to what they'd actually get printed out or on their email explaining you don't have, you know, you can't park, and the the parking is limited for annual pass holders or something like that. You know, make sure that the communication is clear. I think that's gonna be the biggest piece of this, is communication.
The other thing I would like to make sure that they give out with anything is that um how to clean off your invasives from the boat. And we don't include that in the local law, but I think that should be part of whatever anybody gets when they get the permit.
Riverkeeper has information on that, right?
Maybe we have, have a station down at the, at the, at, you know, near the boat launch about it, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, we include it also so people have that information.
Okay, you wanna put it on the pass?
Theoretically, or just they get like a printout with, you know, when they get their receipt, they gotta printout with. Just talk to Sue about that.
Not an obligation, but just informed.
Yes.
Yeah, we could reach out to that, the person, the, you know, the group that's there, perhaps they have some materials they could share with us to either mail out with the permit or include as a link or something.
Yeah, we, we get that stuff from the DEC. Um there's a whole list of things you can ask for. Um they're happy to send them. We, the boat club gets them every year. We usually give them out at their Earth Day Festival. On which fish you can eat, what the seasons are, what the invasives are, how to avoid it. Um a coloring book for kids about what the animal life is in the Hudson. It's all free from um the DEC.
Okay, great.
All right, so are we, I think we, are we all okay? We're all on the same page that we like, like the way local laws drafted? And we're just gonna work on this one issue of the permitting for.
Yeah, I still disagree with the daily thing, that no parking, but I'm outvoted.
I don't understand that, because you agreed with the local law, which didn't have anything at all in it about daily parking, about daily boat launch.
Okay, we were going to work on the daily separately, was my understanding when we drafted this law to handle the bulk of it.
We, we didn't think it was an, an option. We didn't think there was something available and that, that only came to our attention today.
Right, we were gonna continue to look into it.
Right, the, but the issue with this is, is enforcement. Because if someone gets a daily permit and they park there, there's no way to prove you got a permit. And then the issue is, how do you prove someone didn't get a permit? And then I think you have to kind of assume that everyone did get a daily permit, and then there's really no way to enforce this law.
The only other thing is, you know, again, our, our agreement with Boat and Canoe Club does say that they're responsible for uh collecting fees. Um I'm just trying to find out, do you remember what page that was on, Christie? Our latest agreement. So I can read it.
I feel like um I did just OCR to.
And I mean, certainly if a better solution does come next year or two years from now or whatever, that makes it available to daily permit holders, the town board at that time could certainly consider amending the local law to allow them to use the parking.
Right, we did look into um the cost of a meter. And that's eight thousand dollars.
And there are some concerns about flooding and sanding water at that location and things like that. Though apparently the company did have some that survived getting blown away at her during Hurricane Sandy on the Jersey Shore, so that might work out, but it was, yes, quite.
Yeah, we might wanna look into that eventually for um timed parking at the the few parks use parking spots that we have, so that it discourages the people who park there and get on the train. Which isn't happening right now with the pandemic, but um.
Well, I mean, that's possible. That's not, but we wouldn't necessarily need meters for that. I mean, you can just do the parking system for that. You know, we don't, there's like online parking system that you don't need an actual physical meter for.
Okay.
So uh you, we were talking about a physical meter that prints out.
Receipt, right.
Receipt, and that's what's eight thousand dollars.
All right, that doesn't seem worth it.
I don't.
Okay.
So, so those, that was what we looked into, and the other thing was that we can do this, this, um, you know, again, we can have a way for people to get a daily permit, but it seems that if we're trying to get more people to um, you know, incentivize people to get the, the annual permit, because it's uh easier to administer and it, you know, it's basically the cost of, what is it, two launches approximately, then why wouldn't people just do that? And then have that in place and then they can park there. So you get, you know, again, it's, it's incentive to do that.
Right, and then what about the, you need your uh trailer with you when you park there? Because there is always a wiseacre or two that says, oh, oh, I have a permit, I'm just gonna park here. They're not using the drip boat ramp for the boat, they just have a permit.
I, I don't think there's anything we can do about that.
The law says you need to have your trailer. You can only, you only get the annual permit for a trailer, and you need the annual permit to park in the spot, so it follows that you be allowed to park in that spot if you.
With your trailer?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the decal, and you may have some thoughts on this. It seems like the most practical place to put the decal or the sticker or whatever will be issued is on the trailer itself.
On the tongue of the trailer, yes.
So if they don't have a trailer, or if they have their sticker or decal on a vehicle, violation ticket.
Okay, that works.
All right, so with that, are we ready to move forward then with this?
Well, what I can do is, you know, I'll revise it, incorporate these concepts. Yeah, we've certainly made progress, but there's still. Yeah, we've certainly made progress, but there's still room for input. We'll have to, the board will have to have a public hearing, obviously. So, the board could have a resolution to call for a public hearing at your meeting on the 13th. To hold the public hearing on the 27th, or open the public hearing. So, there will be time for further revision and for the boards to take another look at this.
Okay, but that doesn't preclude the clerk from collecting any of these fees at this, at this time for permits, correct?
It's about having something on the books to enforce it.
Right, so we haven't had something on the books to enforce it for all these years, and we've still collected these fees, so we can continue to do that. And then we'll have something on the books to enforce it a little bit later in, in April slash May. Okay, sounds good. Fantastic, okay, moving right along.
One question, are we allowing swimming off that ramp, or we'll deal with that with the signage?
Yeah, it's not a, we're doing a boat launch permit.
Okay.
Permit for boat launches, not for swimming.
Okay.
You know, one thing I was thinking while we were talking. Is that maybe with, when they pick up a permit, you have a. A little slip of paper, a little booklet, or something that telling them what they can and cannot do there. It doesn't have to be a big deal. But just something that they can have, make sure that they know what they're doing.
Sounds like a good idea. Okay. Alright, so next is. The next up is the events policy. So the second. Law that we discussed at our last work session was to consider adopting a version of the Village of Austin Special Events Legislation and Policy. We discussed a few areas where the town's law may differ from the villages, and council has incorporated those initial changes into the village's draft. Council Donna, would you like to walk us through those changes?
So, I mean, the changes are obviously, the board was circulated a red line of the village's law, so. It's a much lengthier and a lot more edits than we saw with the boat launch. So I'll just go through the highlights, and then you can certainly stop me. Do you want me to share my screen? Would that be helpful?
Sure, please.
And just to note, the supervisor was kind enough to read through this entire thing. And provide her comments, so they are in the version that I'm sharing, and. She caught some instances where I forgot to change village to town. So thank you. Do you see it?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so this.
Bigger, it was bigger before and now it's smaller, can be bigger.
Really?
Thank you, that's better. At least for me. Okay. That work for you?
Yeah, as long as everyone else can see it, I just had to reconfigure some things. Okay, so, this is going to be creating a new chapter of the code. The village also made some amendments to their alcoholic beverages and parades and parks and rec. The town has some different chapters regarding that. I'm not sure if those amendments are going to be necessary or to the same extent. So I thought it would be easier once we get on the same page regarding the events portion of it, which is the substantial bulk. It'll be easier to know. If and how we need to amend those other chapters. So. What we're doing here is adopting a version of the village's law, but trying to. Modify it to accommodate the town's needs and the comments of the town board. So one of the things. Is there's a definition here for block party, but it was discussed among the board that. Should a block party actually be exempt, because that's how the village treated it, so. I changed it so that block parties are not exempt, are included as a special event. But that's obviously something the board should think about, whether you want to pursue, proceed that way. It would make it a little bit different in that respect than how the village handles it. I changed the definition of event level. Because it wasn't very clear, or I wasn't clear. What the. Occupancy totals were, so I thought it was. To just clarify that it was over the course of the entire event for each of the event levels. And then just, instead of putting about the staff determination of scope, just put that at the end about how. The superintendent of Parks and Recreation will determine what the scope is. I think one of the issues that I, so in the definition of special events. Added block parties, and then also group swims or plunges because of the events that sometimes happen at Lewis Single Park. One of the issues that I think we have that may be a little bit different than the village is because. The town owns parks and properties that are within village boundaries, so when you're talking about. Municipal roads or municipal right of way. In a lot of instances, if there's an event being held on top of town property. It may actually be a village road or right of way that's going to be impacted because they're immediately adjacent to those properties. And so in a lot of instances, it says town or village, but Dana, I think in one place you put municipal. And I think that's a good suggestion. I think we should just change it so that it's consistent all the way through. So that's something that I will take up in the next round.
Right, and that was also because, you know, the village's code refers to village services, and we refer to town services, but. In many cases, they're village provided services, so just to clarify, I thought municipal would also capture that.
Yes. So this is the definition of special event, and we left in pretty much what the village had. As their definition, again, the intent of this is to try to be as consistent with the village when possible. And if the event will take place in a town park during hours not permitted, that was a comment that came up from this board. At the work session, so I incorporated that. I just changed the definition of superintendent to refer to the village. And then this is, these are the situations where a permit, 166.3. Is where a permit is required, and board had discussed handling this a little bit differently than the village, which had. Adopted a local law that would create a special events advisory committee. And we had discussed doing it a little bit more administratively to the extent we can, instead of creating a separate committee. Have the department heads weigh in. But have the actual approval either be by the Parks and Rec Superintendent. Or the town board, depending on the circumstances, but we'll get to that.
Just talk about funeral processions since we're staring at that. That differentiates. Like, do we need a description of funeral procession, because I just want to make sure that it differentiates itself from a memorial event? Because people, you know, might rent a pavilion, or. Or they might want to use a park for memorial, for example. So I just want to make sure that a funeral procession is described as one would think, which has to do with cars and. On roads.
Or could it say on the way to the cemetery?
Right, like travel.
With an endpoint being the cemetery.
Something, you know, if there's a, I don't know how you do it, but I'm just suggesting that we want to be a little clear about what that means.
So processions are included in the definition of special event?
Right, because a procession is cars.
Not funeral procession, right, funeral procession is excluded specifically. Right, and that's.
Right, special event. Required for the following.
Right. So processions generally do require a permit, but a funeral procession.
Okay. I see, so you're saying because the word procession is defined.
I mean, we can define, I mean, there's a whole lot of terms in here that aren't defined. Yeah, but procession is included in the definition of a special event. But then it carves out funeral procession. As being exempt from requiring a permit, so I mean, I can certainly. Look at Webster's and see how one would define procession. But the board's understanding is that it's, it's a series of cars going from point A to point B, basically?
To the.
Well, I think the question is, people may have a memorial procession down to the river to release river loons or do whatever. Which I hate, but. I mean, and a funeral procession in my mind goes from the funeral home to the cemetery. And doesn't necessarily. Go anywhere else or to an event. At a park or a pavilion. Is that what you're trying to say, Dana?
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, something that somebody could like try to. Kind of draw up a definition of a funeral procession in their own way, but it might really be considered a special event.
Well, maybe so like funeral processions on roadways, right, it's not like something that's going to occur or happen in the park, it's the traveling that we want to exempt.
Yeah, and I don't even know why it's mentioned there, because it's, you know, well, whatever, I guess because of the roadways.
And they have parades, right, in the village, there's parade.
Exactly.
You know.
Right.
Just processions and things like that, so they're trying to exempt that.
Correct.
Use.
Yes, and I don't, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I just want to clarify, since we know that memorial. Events are different, and they are actually considered special events. Whereas funeral processions are not.
And we're gonna require a permit for a memorial event?
I think, yes, I mean. If somebody's coming to use the park for a large group and it's a private event, essentially. Just like anything else, we would require that they get a permit for all of the same reasons of any kind of event. Free, I mean, do you disagree, anybody? I mean, anybody can come and use the park. For any reason, right, you can just show up at the park. Want to show up at the park with friends? Want to throw rocks into the water? You can do that, but you know, if you're going to have a large event of many, many people, and it could create any sort of a. Hazardous situation, it seems to me like you would want to. Let somebody know. And acknowledge, you know, acknowledge it and have, and have it approved by, because you're using. A public facility for that. It's not that different from a wedding, I mean. No, yes, maybe, anybody?
No, I understand what you're saying.
And anytime somebody's going to use the park, it should be. You shouldn't, the town should know. And on top of that, if you're using the park and there's a bathroom there, it's probably closed. So somebody might have to open it up. You know, it's a few things that the person should go through if they're going to use the park. Not just go down and here come 100 people behind them, you got to do a little better than that.
And this is actually regulating events that are on a larger scale than what the town already regulates. In terms of requiring park permits.
And I was just thinking, I was listening, you were talking about the funeral processions. See, when they leave the church and go to the. To the grave site. It's done in a procession there, but when they leave the grave site and go to wherever they're usually having a repass. There's another. You know. Bunch of cars going in a different direction. So there's a little bit more to it than just going to the grave site. Because once they leave the grave site and they go to the. Wherever they're going, unless they're going home, but most time, they go to have someplace to go eat and congregate with each other.
I mean, look, I'm open to any suggestions here, I don't have any hard fast rules about this, if we think that we. Want to open it up for weddings and funerals and not permit them. Again, you know, we can say up until a certain size or something like that, you know, if you want to. Gather, but I just don't, you know, I think you have to, you have to draw a line in the sand at some point if you want to have. Some control over, you know, what happens in your spaces.
And if you give to one, you got to give to another. You're setting a precedent. So you.
Alright, follow the template for now, and if we want to adjust it, we can.
I mean, also, you know, we have to put it up for public hearing, so we can get feedback from people, so. That's part of this public law process.
Moving forward.
That kind of brings up one of the issues is all regulating public versus private spaces. And I understand the intent of if it's going to impact or require municipal services. So I kind of combined. Seven and eight, and just to refresh, this is the list of activities that do not require a permit, so these are exemptions. So, the village had had it restricted to the owner of the property. Or a tenant legally occupying the premises. We had talked about it a little bit last time. And I tried to frame it more as basically a private event happening on private property with the consent of the property owners. But if the board thinks that's too broad, I can narrow it, I just thought that seems more realistic. If you're doing it for a friend or, you know, a family member who may not be. The actual owner.
I like that, I think that makes sense.
And just kind of broadens the area of events that you would contemplate having people at your house.
Yep.
And then, as I mentioned, I did take block parties out of the exemptions, and I put it above. Into the definition of special event, and. And Dana, you had asked, should we also take the reference out to them earlier? So I left in the definition because I added it to the definition of special events, but if you just want to be silent on this, we can, we can do that too.
I don't know if we really need to get into block parties, I just don't know if we do. Is, has it been an issue?
We've had one in the last. Six years, right?
And a road or something like that?
And it's a dead end. So it's only the residents that were impacted.
So you don't want to, you want to exempt block parties?
I think we should.
Okay.
Unless somebody has an issue with that.
The only other block party I can think of is when they do on Lee Wood, but that's again, another dead end off of a dead end.
I don't know. I think we should leave it up. Again, I mean, are they, is anybody like needing to get? And I don't think that there's any. I don't know, it just doesn't seem like there's, it's been impactful at all on the general public in terms of safety or requiring any resources. And without requiring any of our resources. Creating a traffic condition or anything like that, it seems like it's unnecessary at this point.
Well, the situation I contemplated was closing a road, so if what the board is saying is that those scenarios. Are a dead end street where it's only impacting the residents, then. Then it might not be an issue, except for the fact of those residents.
So maybe say block party is not closing, you know, not closing a through street. What?
Say what about them?
I mean, if you want to leave block party in for somebody who closes a through street as opposed to a dead end.
Oh, I see, so that would be an event if a block party requires closing a through street. That's fine, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Sure.
Which I don't think we tend to have, but.
Right, that's fine. Okay.
So in 166.5 and 6, I just kind of restructured. The concepts a little bit, so. 166.5 kind of deals with the application itself and what happens at the beginning. So, you know, these big chunks right here, I didn't just get rid of them, I just moved them down. One of the things we had talked about at the work session is making efforts to process these applications, even if they're not made within 75 days. If we're handling it the way it's currently contemplated in the draft you're looking at, instead of with the village, we may have some more flexibility because it doesn't require that, that additional committee. So application fees will just be from, as determined from time to time. I don't know if the board wants to make them non-refundable, or if, if you want to make them non-refundable, if you've reached a certain threshold or if they don't provide information. The village, I believe, has them as being non-refundable.
Let's just, let's just make it easier on everybody and leave it that way.
So Dana, you had asked about required, all of these other requirements. That they're discussed. I'm not sure if Department of Health approval is specifically referenced.
It doesn't seem to me, but it mentions that they're going to have, they get these other things. So it just seems like you'd want to mention that. I don't know.
What, yeah, I just don't know what you would need Department of Health approval for.
The food truck vendors need to get a certificate, I believe, the Department of Health.
I think anytime you serve food, you have to get a Department of Health certificate or sell food.
And then insurance is discussed in the next paragraph. So the way the village had structured this is that you got what they called a tentative approval, which was after the application was received and it was just kind of determined that the space was available and the resources were available. I just changed it yet to be more of an acknowledgement. The intent of this seemed to be so that people could go forward with advertising their events. But I, I would, was kind of liking, like to try to avoid the concept of a tentative approval because I think it comes with certain connotations. But if the intent is to just reach a certain threshold of the application process at which it seems relatively reasonable to allow the spot, the project sponsor to go forward with publicizing that, that seemed to achieve the same purpose.
Sure, good with that.
And then this is just kind of rewording what they had already said, which is, if you don't give us everything we need and if it's not accurate, it'll be denied and you don't get your money back. And information to be provided in further intensive application and prior to special event. Insurance, where we're going to want to have, I mean, in addition to the town's insurance agent, obviously we'll want to have a lot of the town's department heads review this. But specifically with respect to these, I'd like to have Jim Duffy take a look and see what his thoughts are. But one of the comments that had come up initially was not setting a fixed insurance minimum so that the, this could be set on a case by case basis based upon the scope of the event and the potential issues that may arise. And then we'll have Jim take a look at the alcohol insurance provisions and determine if that needs to be left general to, or if that's more standard.
Where does automobile liability come in? Up, up a little.
What do you mean? Sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, just go back just a little bit. So general liability and automobile, automobile liability policies, under what condition would we want an automobile policy?
The auto show.
Okay, that's fair.
Or if they're going to be just using large vehicles to transport equipment.
Okay.
I could, I could get, that's pretty standard. Honestly, it's, I would need to ask Jim for specific situations. But the town does generally require automobile liability as part of the standard insurance when, for events that are held on town property. So this doesn't really deviate from what the normal practice is.
Okay, thank you.
Same thing with workers' comp, disability insurance and the because I'm not at, at town hall, I changed this to be delivered to the town supervisor and then, you know, they always send it to me anyway, into Jim, so. And because we decided to, the town board wanted to leave the insurance requirements a little more vague, I just turned, took out this provision because in the language itself, it already gives the village, the, excuse me, the town board the discretion to, or the town to set the insurance limits. Standard indemnification, hold harmless, food vendor information, Department of Health. One thing that I did change, because I copied and cut and pasted this from above, they'd asked for a site plan. I changed that to sketch plan because site plans are pretty technical and I'm not sure if that's really necessary if you're just, you know, having some vendors in, in the park.
Like, thanks.
So the reason why it says the superintendent and/or the town board is applicable because when we get to the next section below, those are the two entities, as, as the way the law is currently drafted, that would be approving it. So it's basically whoever's going to be giving the permit in the instance will also be the one that sets the, the security deposit, but if we have the town board weigh in on that or the supervisor's office weigh on that, on that on a regular basis regardless, that's something we could change. And I just put in a time limit that's consistent with all of the other things we're asking the applicants for. Notice to property owners, this was its own separate section, but I moved it up just because I was trying to kind of consolidate for the benefit of these project sponsors. So they have one place to look to know pretty much everything they have to do. So, but this was a requirement that was in the village's version of law. And I think, I believe it was Councilman Meyer who had brought it up when the town board discussed it at their work session. So.
Is it 50 feet?
Fifty, fifty feet isn't very big. It's pretty much going to be adjacent. Maybe across the street, depending on the size of the street. I, I, I think, I think Dana, you had had a question about whether this will affect like restaurants or catering halls, but I think the intent is to really not have those types of establishments bound by this. And if that's not clear from the way it's drafted, then maybe we need to go back and look at that, unless you guys disagree.
No, that was the only thing I was concerned is just to make sure that nobody could re continue this to.
I don't think it's realistic to expect a restaurant or a catering hall of, every time they, they have an event to, to go notify the public because if you're using it lawfully, basically, it's ten, so as, as that type of operation. So, but that's a good point, you know, when you're, when you're kind of digging in on this, we want to make sure it's abundantly clear that those types of operations would not be bound by this type of permit.
Right, so I just want to make sure that we, we are clear so that it doesn't come back to pit us.
Correct. Banner permits, I will defer to anyone who has opinions on this because I really don't.
I mean, the banners tend to go up in the village, so following along with whatever they have, I think is fine. I think we can follow what they have. Because they're the ones who are ultimately approving them, not us. There's no place in the, that I can think of unless, I guess it's going up in a town park. Maybe we distinguish that if it's going in a town park. I mean, if, if they want it on the bank building, if they want it over 133, that's, you know, the village is going to be the one that's putting it up. And if they have requirements for how long it's going to take them and who gets first priority, I think we should follow that along and maybe just articulate that that's how it has to work.
I mean, we could leave it in just in case somebody comes up with a banner idea. We can want to know about it 30 days in advance, but.
Oh, no, I'm saying leave it in. I, I want to, I want to leave it in, but, because I want to follow what the village has and they require the 30 days. So, you know, I think it's important that we give them what the village wants for that because, you know, they're competing for the, you know, whatever, interest compete for the same space and they need to juggle the space for, with what they got. For what they got.
All right, we'll put that sentence back in. That was just kind of going with the, the intent of what we had discussed earlier with if, if they submit less than 75 days, we'll try to process it. But if that's more of an issue for the village, then certainly we could leave that in. Okay, so the actual review itself. So there were different event levels that were addressed above, which are based upon the amount of people and/or the level of services. Excuse me, municipal services that will be required to accommodate the event. So event level one is defined as having up to 299 and the support services will only be required from town parks, Department of Parks Recreation or town parks. Then the superintendent can administratively grant the permit. As long as they provide everything that they need to in those two sections that discuss the application and everything else. If it's level two or three, which are the more populated events, I do not recall the exact numbers. So level two is between 300 and 499 and level three is over 500. So these are, these are substantial events. So for those levels of events and where support services will be required, municipal support services will be required. The superintendent is basically going to, what we, what we do for the cabaret license already, as this board knows, is that an application comes in, it goes to the town clerk, the town clerk distributes it to the police department and the building department for their input. Do they have any violations? Do you anticipate any issues? Do you recommend granting the permit? And, and we, I kind of contemplated this being a similar scenario where it comes into the, the superintendent of Parks and Recreation, he takes a look at it, assesses where it fits on the event level scale. And then if it's two or three, based upon the municipal services required and the amount of people anticipated, then you send it out to all the department heads. And I just kind of listed most, if not all, of the department heads that were going to, that were going to be on the village's committee that they were going to create. Send it out for their input. If they all recommend approval, or if they all recommend approval subject to conditions that can reasonably be implemented, then the superintendent of Parks and Recreation can just do it, initiate the permit administratively, subject to those conditions recommended. If any of the department heads recommend disapproval, or they recommend conditions or terms and conditions that aren't really feasible to implement, then it gets kicked up to you guys. And those are the circumstances, the bigger events under which the town board would be asked to look at this. And I, I don't, unless you guys disagree, I don't anticipate that happening all that often. And then when it comes to the town board, it just talks about what the authority is to do. You consider it at a public meeting and act on the application by a vote of the majority of the board. Kind of gives you, leaves you to some discretion as to how you want to handle it, hear from the applicant, hear from the public, but without establishing any set procedure other than it will be addressed at a public meeting. And then you can approve or disapprove. If it's disapproved, you have to give your reasons. You could put terms and conditions. And these are a, a non-exclusive enumeration of potential justifications for denying an application inadequate municipal resources available to protect the health, safety, property and general welfare of the nearby residents and property owners, or the safety of participants and/or attendees of the event. A lot of this got moved around, but it is language that, to the extent I could, tried to, tries to mirror the village because again, we're trying to make this consistent as possible. The special event or event sponsor has been the subject of violation or has had any objective significant adverse impacts on the surrounding properties within the last two years. Those are suggestions by Dana, which I think are good ones. And then if we want to expand it beyond the specific event to the sponsor, which I think is also a good suggestion. Again, this is illustrative and not intended to be exclusive, but I think you want to, you want to put as much detail in there as possible and make it so that it's as objective as possible. The special event does not provide for sufficient services or facilities for the anticipated attendees. A high probability that the special event will endanger public safety results and significant property damage. And/or the town does not have the resources available to devote to the special event because a prior application for another special event on the same date has received temporary approval or they issued some special permit. Special event permit.
Um, something we may want to add here is because of the location of Angle and Gordine Parks, that there could be a situation where we have to deny a special event in Angle because there's a special event going on at Gordine that is sort of the same issue. So maybe there's something there where it could be another a special event issued in a town or village park or in the town or village. So that if there is that sort of, or something's happening at the train station or whatever, that's not on our property, but would be impactful.
Thank you.
Right, so for example, like the fire parade or something like that wouldn't, would conceivably same way impact Gordine.
Right, right, and vice versa.
Correct.
Yeah.
Or they had the big, big ass barbecue and then if you decided you're going to have a huge event that same day at Angle, that would be troublesome.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think this is one of the last substantive sections. I moved up the discussion of the denial into the, into the sections talking about the authority of the superintendent and the town board. So this is just looking at amendments, modifications, recissions and terminations. Pretty, I mean, just to paraphrase, if, if something happens, if we find out something was inaccurate, if it's going, if it turns out it's going to be a hazard, the, it can be suspended or have the permit revoked. The village had it as being the village manager. The town doesn't really have an equivalent position, so it's generally the town supervisor in that situation. Which I think is, is okay under the circumstances because the permit's already been issued. One of the concerns I had with the process before was because the town supervisor also sits on the town board, which is different than obviously the village where the village manager is not a sitting board member. But if, if anyone has any other suggestions about how to handle that, I'm, I'm happy to hear them.
That was your issue for why we couldn't have a special events committee?
Why, I thought it would be complicated because they also had a whole, they had the committee, then they had the whole appeals procedure where at that point it would go to the village board, but if the supervisor is on the committee and then is going to be hearing an appeal, it just, it seemed messy.
Right.
But at this point, we're contemplating a scenario where the permit's already been issued. And then either they want to make changes to the permit that's been issued, or circumstances have changed, or they've done something wrong and it's come to light. And I think the intent here is having it be in the hands of one person, because sometimes you do need to act quickly under these contemplated situations. Liz, you're muted.
Like a hurricane is coming?
Yeah, it's like, okay, we, we need, you know, can we.
You're not having it.
Board, you know? So, so that's, that's kind of why I did, I did it that way.
Okay.
Notification, this is a. Notification, this is a section I moved up. These, these are. If if anyone has any input on these, these are straight out of the village. It's for the first offense. Not less than $500 nor more than 2,000 for each offense.
Plus, we're going to have to change the boat ramp law and match these. Ours is a lot less. I mean, I get that it stepped up. I don't know, maybe you want to just keep that 250. And 1,000 for the first fence. I don't know. Everybody.
Does anyone else have any thoughts?
Just seems a little steep for us.
Yeah, especially since people do tend to. Organize memorials without. Anyway, yeah, start with 250, 1,000 and go up from there.
I don't think most of the time memorials are bigger than 299, though, you know, if they're under.
These are really big events.
Oh, yeah, no.
So I just don't think it's.
Well, for really big events, leave it then. Whatever.
This is for the, for, yeah, okay, so they'll leave it. I I mean, if we want to just be consistent with the village, we can, you know, that would be the reason for leaving it.
We can, we can think about it.
And we could talk about it during the public hearing, too.
Exactly.
And that's it. No alterations to town property, which is, as you can see, straight out of the village's code. And then the other sections are what I had mentioned earlier with other chapters that the village amended to be consistent with this. But I think the the town has, already has the alcohol provisions. And the parks provisions that I don't think would be necessarily inconsistent with this, but once we have a handle on this language, I'll go back and see if. Any of those need to be modified just to make them consistent.
All right, fantastic. Well, thank you. That was a tremendous amount of work and very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to the village for giving us a nice starting off point.
They did. We made the one. Over the left. Okay, so with that, if there are no more questions or comments about this.
I'll stop sharing my screen.
Special events, town law proposed. We can, I guess we can also add a resolution for to call for the public hearing. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, fantastic. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for advice of council and contracts?
So moved.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you so much. Please join us next week for our town board regular meeting on Tuesday, April 13th at 7:30 PM. Also, as always, via Zoom until further notice for the time being. But hopefully we'll see everybody in person soon. Don't forget the, the conference plan meeting this Thursday evening at 7:30 PM. Also on Zoom, check out our website or Facebook page, et cetera, for the link. Have a great night and a great week, everybody. We'll see you soon.